Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment Successor Agency, Callexico Financing Authority Meeting. Meeting is now in session at 6:53 PM. Call, oh, I'm sorry, call to order at 6:53 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Legazpi.
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Thailanda.
Here.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon.
Present.
We have come.
Okay, thank you. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we read our mission statement, I would like to ask for a moment, a minute of silence for the passing of President Jimmy Carter and for the victims of the fires in the Los Angeles area. We will now read the mission statements. Together we plan to provide effective and efficient services in a current and sustainable manner to improve the quality of life overall in our U.N. border community in Callexico. Okay? And also if you could remain standing for our invocation by Father Carlos Rojas.
Buenas noches. En el nombre del Padre, del Hijo, del Espíritu Santo, amén. Oremos. Señor Jesús, tú que eres el Rey y Señor de señores, eres el soberano de los reyes de la tierra y el único a través de quién y para quién todas las cosas existen. Oramos hoy por todos aquellos que sirven en los cargos públicos, especialmente oramos por los bomberos quienes exponen su vida para controlar los incendios. Te pedimos por los que formulan y prueban nuestras leyes para que mantengan sus ojos fijos en tu ley como su máxima autoridad. Pedimos por todos los que ejecutan las leyes sean llenados de asombro en tu presencia como lo es tu poder en el universo. Te pedimos que los que juzgan en los tribunales humanos sepan quiénes son responsables ante ti, el juez de todos. Señor, te pedimos que la tragedia del aborto y el comercio de las partes del cuerpo de los bebés puedan despertar las conciencias de los que están en cargos públicos y los impulse a la acción para defender los derechos humanos y la dignidad. Señor, por los muchos que han estado dormidos, por tantos servidores públicos que han olvidado la diferencia entre servir al público y servirse de él. Despiértalos, ilumínalos y sánalos. Y para los que ya tienen fijos los ojos en tu ley de vida, da el coraje y la perseverancia inagotable en la tarea de servir al bien común y garantizar el derecho a la vida que viene solamente de ti, que ningún gobierno puede quitar. Te lo pedimos a ti, señor, que vives y reinas por los siglos de los siglos.
Amén.
El señor este con ustedes. Que la bendición de Dios todopoderoso, Padre, Hijo y Espíritu Santo descienda sobre ustedes y permanezca para siempre. Siéntense, por favor. Gracias por la invitación. Me da mucho gusto estar aquí entre ustedes y sepan que siempre los tengo presentes en mis oraciones. Para que logremos trabajar todos como equipo por el bien de nuestro Callexico. Amén.
Amén.
Feliz tarde noche.
Gracias, padre. Okay, close session announcements.
Yes, thank you, mayor. City Council made a close session on the items described on today's agenda. We did receive direction when all reportable actions were taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, we do have one revision to the agenda, item number 13 on discussion and potential action items, which is the approval of Millie Prop 218 notices for commercial and residential solid waste collection services. Staff is recommending tabling that item and that be brought forward at a future date.
Okay, I believe we also had number 14, city manager?
Yes, number 14 as well. The chief has been made aware of the situation.
I'd like to motion to table item number 13, table item number 14, and move item number 16 to 12, and then make item 12, 12A, as I believe that item 16 is an extremely pressing issue.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legazpi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailanda.
Also for the next presentation of certificate to be handed out is to Mr. Jesús Solano, who founded the Callexico Volunteer Alliance Group, for the outstanding contribution of making our commercial area clean and helping making our park suitable for the youth. The nonprofit organization is inspiration and a true example of excellence. Mujeres of Voices. IBEW 569, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I like the brotherhood of electrical workers. Them too also came and assisted on a volunteer base. We're not getting paid to do what they did, helping us with Rodriguez Park. So, we have these certificates to hand out, appreciative certificates, and the first one that I will be handing out to is Mujeres with Voices. For the outstanding contribution to organizing a Christmas caravan, bringing joy to all ages during the Christmas holidays, and providing gifts for the youth. Your club is an inspiration and true example of excellence. Mujeres of Voices. Everybody wants to say a few words? Ohenya?
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi. And members of the City Council, we at Mujeres with Voices want to express our heartfelt gratitude for your support and recognition and this deeply appreciated. Seeing the public's positive reaction and the joy of little kids and the community members, that itself was more than enough. I want to acknowledge that we did this for the love of our city and for that change that we all want to see in our town. We did this out of our hearts, our expenses, and volunteering our time. We expected nothing in return, but the joy of the kids made everything well worth it. We also want to thank Glory Sanitation, Three Greens, and Pollo, means Pollos, for donating the first, second, and third place awards for the caravan. Thank you, Callexico, for believing in our efforts, and we want to continue serving our city in any way that we can to be the positive change that we all deserve.
Thank you, Ohenya. The next certificate appreciation comes dear to my heart. It's the Kids and Badges. This is the 21st year Kids and Badges Program that was started 21 years ago. For hosting the 21st Annual Kids and Badges Event, bringing joy to the youth by providing gifts during the Christmas holidays. And we, the kids, I say "we" as a first responder, the Callexico Police Department had also started a second program called Teens and Badges. This is the first year created by Officer Miriam Vega. So, come on up here. And I believe the chief has something to give away, or things to give away. It's not that heavy, is it?
Thank you, everybody. Take the moment, and with permission from Madam Mayor, I'd like to recognize some of our major sponsors and volunteers for this event. Again, 21 years. We started this, actually, Councilman Legaspi was instrumental, and we're going to recognize one more person. 21 years ago, we saw the need for the public. We used to do Shop with the Cop, and we saw the need that Callexico wasn't being represented. And we were averaging about maybe six kids that were sent to this shop with a cop, and we said, "We could do it better. We could do more, and we could do better for our kids." First year, we did 30?
Eighty.
We did 80 the first year. And so, from there on, we averaged about 30. Last year, on our 20th anniversary, we did 50 kids. This year, we did 30 kids, and then we started Teens and Badges, and we did another 23 teenagers. And so, we ended up now addressing the need of also teenagers, because we're still kids. You know, they still should get involved. So, I'd like to take this moment and recognize some of our donors and some of volunteers that, you know, without this, we couldn't do it. We took these kids out, we gave them breakfast, we took them to go see Santa, who landed in a helicopter. Actually, the Grinch landed in a helicopter. Santa went and arrested the Grinch, and then we took them shopping. The kids loved it. Seeing their faces bright up, you know, really puts, you know, all of us how special this event is. So, first, I'd like to recognize Vo neighborhood Medical Clinic. If I can get the representative to come up. The next one's going to be the One Stop Registration Service. One Stop? I didn't see if we could be here. I don't think so. MTC, they were one of our partners that helped out and provided support. Next one is Ashley Outlet Callexico. They provided Santa's bench where the kids took pictures. And then, of course, the CPOA, who donated their time and money to help out. And of course, the Grand Plaza, which hosted our Teens and Badges. Sun Community Federal Crate Union. Inner Care. First Imperial Crate Union. And of course, we can't forget Victor Legaspi, who's been the start of it all, who's volunteered 19 years? Well, every year, but he actually ran the program for the 19 years at the beginning, so... Along with Mr. Legaspi, Ortesia Mandaris, who was there since the beginning. And Denny's, who provided the breakfast for the kids and the officers. And last but not least, the officer that's taken over the program since Mr. Legaspi retired, Officer Miriam Vega. Again, I want to emphasize that without these people who donated their time, effort, and money, you know, selflessly to help the kids of Callexico, this wouldn't be possible. Let's have one more round of applause for him, please.
Also, for the next presentation of certificate to be handed out is to Mr. Jesús Solano, who founded the Callexico Volunteer Alliance Group, for the outstanding contribution of making our commercial area clean and helping making our park suitable for the youth. The nonprofit organization is inspiration and a true example of excellence. Then I forgot to mention that the Volunteer Alliance Group also cleaned up the Veterans Monument at one time. So, coming up, Mr. Solano and... Here comes the crew. Jesse, say a few words for us. We only have two hours, Jesse.
I always forget my glasses, but not to gain. All right, first, I would like to say that I would be accepting this certificate on behalf of the Callexico Volunteer Alliance Group. The council group has been doing a lot for Callexico. Many volunteers doing the painting back here at the Red Iron Fence around City Hall. They're taking care of that, cleaning the parks, pressure washing the sidewalks in downtown, and many other things with the direction of Mr. Jesús Solano back here. Thanks to City Manager Juan Cuadrillas and all the council members for approving this project at Rodriguez Baseball Field. Also, Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi for donations of coffee for the workers on Saturday mornings at also the baseball field. Councilmember Lisa Callejon for donation of cases of bottled water. Parks Chairperson Taurina Blanca Morales, Maris Hurtado, for donations of cana asada and other essential items for Saturday morning for the construction people. Also, to council member... Thailanda? Lisa Thailanda's right here. For the donation of the hot dogs, also on that day. The Electrical Union and the Carpinteries Union for volunteering their time for your charge to put the roof on the concession stand. Also, former Mayor Camilo Garcia. Also, former Mayor Camilo Garcia for being there and helping out. Well, from here, from Rodriguez Park, supposed to go on to Nosotros Park and continue making the parks great for the baseball season. Thank you.
Also, don't forget the mayor and David Notacumbo for the ceviches at one time. Oh, you weren't there, I'm sorry. They're really good. I ate one for you. The next certificate of appreciation will be handed over to the Carpenters Union. And I need to make sure that I give the number out, 619. For your outstanding contribution to fixing Rodriguez Park Baseball Field, making it suitable for our youth, your union is an inspiration and true example of excellence. Come on down.
Well, hi, City of Callexico. My name is Fabio Martinez, and I'm here representing the Local 619. As you guys can see, we all of us, we actually, we've been commuting out to work all of this time and all of our career, pretty much. We pretty much see ourselves as professionals, and we go out there and build pretty much roads, high rises, hospitals, courthouses, libraries, pretty much schools, everything that's going on for the kids. And also, that's why we're here, we just want to make our community better. And we believe if you want to be a good neighbor, you have to be a good neighbor yourself. So, for that, you have to put in your own time. Even though we, as you guys can see, me and Diego, we just came in here from San Diego Airport, and as well as them, they have been working out all day. So, we pretty much, we want to thank Victor Legaspi and all the council members, and also as well Hector for putting us out here. And we want to appreciate everybody else, as well as Mr. Solano and Marita for the group alliance. And also, we would like you guys to keep inviting us to help continue making the city better than how it was before. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Last but not least, a certificate appreciation presented to IBW 569. For your outstanding contribution fixing Rodriguez Park Baseball Field, making it suitable for our youth, your union is an inspiration and true example of excellence.
Hi, thank you. Hola, buenas noches. I'm Fabiola, representing IBW Local 569. And we've been out here in the community for over twenty years. Our apprentices go through five years of a program. They graduate, and they're able to journey out as journey men or journey women. After that, they embark in their long career, good paying career, with great benefits for them and their families, and they become state certified electricians. So, we've been here for over twenty years. We've trained hundreds and hundreds of people. And I'm just very thankful for the council here that is recognizing us. Please think of us for your future projects, and we look forward to collaborating this next year. Thank you.
Okay, so for our next award... So, this mayoral recognition is for a fifteen-year-old young Callexican lady that assists Deansa Junior High, I'm sorry, not Junior High, Deansa Ninth Grade Academy. She started boxing at the age of six, after wanting to follow in her older sister's footsteps, who also boxed and started training daily since. At the age of eleven, she won her first national championship and has since obtained eight times national champion in USA Boxing, where she is ranked number one in her division and is part of the high-performance team. She has also placed first in other boxing tournaments like the Texas Women's Championship and the Beautiful Brawlers in San Francisco, among others. She is a very disciplined athlete, trains every day with her trainer, who is her father, Francisco Osseguera, and with the assistance of her mother and siblings. So, this mayoral recognition is presented to Naira Osseguera.
Hello. Buenas noches. I'm Francisco Osseguera, Papa Naira Osseguera. Tenemos mucho tiempo aquí en boxeando desde que ella tenía, como dice, seis años. Ella quería decidir a seguir los pasos de su hermana, que hizo los trials para las Olimpiadas, y pues ella siguió sus pasos. Ha batallado mucho estas últimas mentes porque ya se va creciendo de edad. Los contrincantes son más difíciles, pero ahí vamos siguiendo. Esperamos que no quiten el boxeo para el veintiocho, porque su propósito es llegar a las Olimpiadas, pero está en proceso de que si lo van a quitar o no. Pero ese es su sueño, seguir boxeando, llegar a las Olimpiadas, y de ahí mirar si se hace profesional o se hace la enforcement. Eso es lo que ella quiere hacer. Y aquí estamos, y cualquier pregunta o si quieren entrenamientos, pues la buscan a ella o a mí. Entrenamos en casa, no tenemos un gimnasio. Muchas gracias por este reconocimiento a la Ciudad de Callexico, por tomarla en cuenta después de muchos años que tenemos aquí, y es la primera vez que estamos en posición al número uno. Muchas gracias.
Okay, moving forward, thank you to everyone. They're all, we appreciate the work of all of you, and we appreciate our young talent in our city. And we hope that you go to the Olympics and you bring us that medal. Thank you. Moving forward with public comments and public appearances, not to exceed three minutes. This is the time for the public to address the City Council on any item not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Group commentators may be requested to limit their group comments to fifteen minutes. The City Council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. If the item you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comment when we get to the item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the City Council. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Oscar Piscata.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Council, and people here in attendance, City Manager. For those who don't know me, my name is Oscar Piscata. Been working with the city, with the Callexico Department for quite some time. First thing, I would like to wish one of our own, George Tuvianueva, he's currently out in Los Angeles. He was teamed up with one of the two Mexican teams. I just spoke with him today, this morning, and their assignment is a pretty tough one. It's a search and to recover. Today, they found another two bodies in their section. It's a tough job. I wish him luck, plus the strength to all of them out there. The LA Fire Department, or County, all mixed together, I believe their budget is eight-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, just for the fire department. That's a lot. They were cut back seventeen million. According to them, it affected the fires they're having. That's how important every cent to public safety and the fire department. Now, for those who are thinking, well, why so much, eight-hundred-and-fifty million? Of course, we're talking about that calendar, I mean, huge. The fire trucks we use, fire engines, the equipment, it's a little more pricer than our police cars. It's just a lot more. Not only that, we have to re-cert, re-test California states, we have to, due to what we do. It costs a lot of money. Currently, over on the west side of town, which we thank you for that work, we thank you all, we still currently have two firefighters on the west side, driving around in a 2007 fire truck. I do understand there's some work that has been done to get us a new one. That's why it costs so much. It's 2007 engine, we have to roll down the windows to open the door from, to the outside. We do our best with what we have. We still need help, but we thank you. We still thank you for what we're doing. We're still pushing forward. We thank you for that. There's still tons of work, tons of work, but not just from you guys up here, not just from the one hundred and sixty employees. I think the citizens, they're already doing a lot. Volunteer after volunteer work, that could only go so far. Putting personal agendas, to vendettas, all that aside, we need to think big. We all need to think big. We think small, mama papa shops, taco stand mentality, which I love taco stands, as you can tell, but if we stay that way, this is where we're gonna end up. Public safety still needs help. The fire department, we are moving forward. We have to keep in mind why it's so pricey. We do bring ideas, solutions. Hopefully, we take a little bit more time to help you, help us, help them. We have to keep moving forward. The rest of the state and the nation is, fees go up for everyone. We hate to pay. We all hate to pay more, but we have to. We want this city to be beautiful. We're fighting each other. This park, no. This park, yes. This park, no. Folks, we need to make some hard decisions for the betterment of the whole city. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you. Jesse Garcia.
Jesse Garcia, resident of Callexico. Right now, I want to start first with Nosotros Little League Baseball Field. Well, the season's gonna start in about three more weeks, and so far, the parking lot on Nosotros Park has not been open. People have, like last season, have to park their cars on the street, on Watson Craft all the way to Grant Street, and then turn on Grant Street and park all around for their houses, other people's houses, and walk all the way to Nosotros Baseball Field. When there is a parking lot right just south of the baseball field, but it's been blocked off, nobody can use it. We need that parking lot to be open for those people to park their vehicles. Everybody I talked to are saying that they're in favor of that parking lot. It's too tough to work, to walk, and sometimes carry their eyeshets or their chairs a few blocks down. So, we could open that parking lot before the season starts. Also... On Lincoln and Lee, there is a gym for boxing and baseball. The people who live in that area have told me that they notice kids that first they go to Rodriguez Park to warm up, and then they cross the street to get to the gym. They said they would like a crosswalk on that intersection for the safety of those kids. Now, we'll go to downtown, downtown alleys. Especially on Sundays, I come out of church and I go to check those alleys, and it's a big mess, like a tornado went in there and took all the trash from the dumpsters and threw them all over the alley. I mean, people have said that, ¿naguero en Mexicari? Do you see alleys like this? Naguero in El Centro? Only in Callexico. So, something has to be done. I mean, it's totally embarrassing, people from Arata to come here and see this. Something has to be done. I don't know who's in charge of this, is the fire marshal, conforcer, the police, whoever it is. Something has to be done and stop this. Well, I'd like to, you know, right here, what's saying, the most, another more important thing that has to be done is, we need to bring back Mike Solano. When Mike was in charge, we had nice parks. The streets were always getting repaired, sidewalks, you know, and right now, it's not like that. So, I don't know what's taking the council a long time to bring him back, but it has to be done. So, I hope you look into this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Horton.
Esteemed members of the City Council, Callexico, I applaud you. What I come up here to talk about is good government, and I think we should all maybe Google and see what a general law government is and how it's supposed to function. I think we would be very enlightened to see that part, to see what's going on, and I'm sure that the City Council understands what I'm talking about. One of the things I want to do is applaud Mr. Legespi. He has given me the ability to do certain things to help the city. He gave me the ability to bring the T-Mobile grant to Callexico, which I think is going to help the city of Callexico to move forward. It was something that I brought to the city, working through Mr. Legespi and working through the City Manager, and we have seen results. Another thing is, in reference to what I do, at the Crossroads Center Shopping Center, which is where Foodful is and Ride Aid and some of the big names there, we're getting ready to bring eight EV stations, fast charging and the other type of EV station, four, four. This is something new that's going to enhance the city of Callexico, and it's going to say, only in Callexico, we have this. And this is something that we could take a very good point and pat everybody on the back that is part of Callexico. This is a positive note. Another thing that we're bringing at the center is Wingstop. Everybody thinks it's a great thing, so we're bringing Wingstop into Callexico. That's a positive point. And one of the other things that I wanted to bring up, it costs us at the center thousands of dollars to repair certain items, and I'm not against the homeless, but we have to find a way to help them. And at the center, we're looking at ideas we could bring forth to Mr. Legespi to help the homeless situation in a positive way. We're trying to be positive, working with the Police Department and the Fire Department. We support our public service, and if we could do it even more positively, we will do it. These are things that, as a citizen that cares about the city that he was born in, that wants to move things forward, and I hope that the City Council and I applaud Mr. Legespi will give us the ability to move forward. We are citizens of Callexico. We help each other to move forward for success. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Saunders.
Good evening, City Council, city. What I bring tonight is a traffic issue that we have. There at Ninety-eight and Rockwood, it's nice that we have that fixed, but about a car length back is where you have Birch and Rockwood. And there, we're starting to get about an accident a month or more. It could be due to confusion with the way it's set up, because there's so little space in there. It could be a number of things, but something should be looked into on that because the last couple of accidents have been pretty bad, and it's closed the street off for half an hour to an hour. And in addition, you can hear the cars that just zoom by there all the time. So it's something that would definitely be useful to look at. And then the other thing is, I did notice that on the YouTube page, we now have access to comments. I don't know about the live stream, but now we can make comments afterwards on YouTube videos, and that's very appreciated. And that's it.
Thank you.
Victor Rocha.
My name is Victor Rocha. I'm a resident of Callexico. First thing I want to discuss with you is your agenda tonight. You don't have the warrants or the payroll expenses. Make it sure that you guys approve them at the beginning of the month. Otherwise, your payments are going to be late to your vendors, and most likely, you're going to be incurring expenses, additional expenses for being late. Also, I think you need to start requiring your finance director to provide your financial reports on a monthly basis. You want to know what the status is at all times, where you at with your funds, because that's your priority, is to administer our funds appropriately. And know the bottom line, do you have money to allocate or not? Because you're constantly looking at each other, do we have money, do we don't? Also, the other issue has to do with the Nosotros Park. You allocated five-hundred-thousand dollars to it. That was about two years ago. Nothing has been done. Nothing has been done. The kids can't use it. Bathrooms are locked. They cannot throw a party because the bathrooms are locked. They cannot use it at all because we all have necessities. And you're putting them at risk. It used to have a gate that police officers used to close at a certain time. You have the parking lot closed, but you don't have the park closed. You're allowing for kids to go out there and burn rubber and do whatever they want to do. Someone's going to get injured in our city property. We're self-insured. That means that's a high risk. Please take the necessary steps, utilize those five-hundred-thousand, you allocated them, get a bid or fix it. You have the money, use it, fix it. Why are you guys waiting? Now you're going to take a hundred-and-fifty thousand to allocate to Rodriguez Park? Out of that funds? So how are we going to fix all the parks that are going to be halfway done? Or are we going to complete at least one park that you allocated the funds for? The kids are going to, he says, we're ready to use it, but the park is not ready. There's no restrooms for the parents, for the people that go and see our kids play. So please, take the necessary steps to take corrective action. Direct your City Manager. He went out there and painted graffiti, that's about it, during the election process. He knows what the problem is, so I strongly, you continue searching for the correct City Manager, because he's not doing anything. He don't have your financials, you don't have your warrants. That's his main responsibility, to let you know what we have and what we don't have. So please, I urge you, look at that man, tell him this is what we need. You need to give direction, not him telling you what to do. It's the opposite. We elected you to govern, to legislate. He just approved and say, in his last, his report said he allocated a hundred-and-fifty thousand out of the Nosotros Park. He doesn't have that authority. If you can tell me what his spending amount is, I can assure you it's not a hundred-and-fifty thousand he can allocate. Please, pay attention. Look at your minutes. Have a lot of typos. Talanda, your name is misspelled. Pay attention. Look at the details that it's being presented to you. Review them and take corrective action when it's needed. I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Solano.
I am a mayor and a council, City Manager, public, Mr. Solano, 426 Rosman, Callexico. I was also out there these past few days on Nosotros Park. There's also additional tagging on the walls on the north side. The building is tagged. There's two murals that have existed there for quite a while. Now, they literally tagged completely. They're completely tagged, both murals, okay? So I also suggest, you know, more lighting. We do have funding for that, like Victor had just stated right now. So I suggest more lighting on the park. Also, Jesse mentioned about the poles for the parking lot. I've been out there. Those poles can be moved a hundred-and-fifty feet down to where the first light pole is, to where we can utilize the parking lot. Now, if the city does not want vehicles to be driving out there, now a walking trail, so be it. You can put barriers, okay? But a high-profile vehicle can go in and out the parking lot, but a low profile will get stuck there, okay? So we need some repairs there. But I suggest to open that for the public because season is just around the corner, okay, and the lighting. The other thing is, we all know that there's a lot of tagging going around in Callexico for quite a while. It's not something new. It's something, oh, it's not just Callexico. A lot of cities are dealing with it too. But we want to know, what is it that the Police Department is doing? Do they have a profile on these taggers? Is it updated? The city ordinance, are you guys going to amend them, beef them up to be more stiff? Are you guys lined up with the DA, with the Marquez? Because it doesn't make sense if you update a city ordinance pertaining to vandalism and graffiti and it's not lined up with a backup from District Attorney. So my suggestion is, you know, to get on that. Nosotros Park, my understanding is some parks have cameras. They're not operational, okay? So let's utilize the money that we have to install the cameras. Let's update them. We understand that there's not enough police to do all the patrolling, but we can install cameras and have a monitor where they can be monitoring what's going on at the Police Department. We might not catch them, but we can have some pictures, some videos of the ones that are vandalizing, and we can have pictures of the vehicles, license plates, you know? So that's good information. And the other thing that I want to bring up to this council is the water deal. Sooner or later, you guys are going to have to pick it up, okay? The water deal on the, either it's going to go up or it's not going to go up. We left it for a while, so you need to work on that. The other thing that I have been requesting, I think this will be my sixth or fifth time, is a forensic audit. We need to know exactly where we stand. It's not finding who's at fault, who messed up, or what. We need to know exactly the status. We need a forensic audit to know exactly where we are. And the other thing is, we need to update our policies.
Thank you, Mr. Solano.
Okay.
Pass the three minutes. Thank you.
Julio Rocha.
Julio Rocha. Buenas noches, miembro, residente de Callexico, miembros del Consilio. Quería saber si me pueden actualizar qué está pasando con la aplicación de City Manager? Que tan, cómo estamos en el proceso de si ya buscaron a alguien o ya están unos por entrevistar, si... Callexico quiere saber cómo estamos con él, en la posición de City Manager, si ya pronto se va, se va a ser feo, o hay todavía más personal que entrevistar. Solo les encargo, por favor. Otra cosa, miembros del Consilio, necesitamos empezar a hacerle este, pero muchos problemitas que tiene la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you.
Carmen Estrada.
Buenas noches. Pues como ustedes saben, vengo junta tras junta, y pues lamentablemente, pues no es nada bueno lo que está sucediendo en los campos. Nosotros tenemos bastantes equipos. Hemos perdido un campo más, que es el Carmen Estrada, porque están poniendo una torre, la cual cerraron el sistema de agua. Entraron los troques, destruyeron un campo, un destague, que hace ocho años trajimos el proyecto de la luz, trajimos el proyecto de los árboles, y trajimos el proyecto del sistema de agua. Fue aproximadamente casi unos cuatrocientos mil dólares que se metieron ahí. Fue donación de la IID, fue donación que pusieron los postes, los del Unión de Electricistas, y ciento-veinticinco árboles que nos regalaron la comunidad, que se pusieron en todos los campos. Es una tristeza que la Liga de Callexico tiene ciento-veintisiete equipos de todo el Valle Imperial, es la liga más grande y la única en Callexico, y lamentablemente hemos perdido un campo que lo hicimos con amor y con el corazón. Que vamos a perder veinticuatro juegos que hacemos a la semana ahí. No tenemos campo para los niños de cuatro a ocho años y los niños que ya vienen de la high school, que juegan en ese campo. Por favor, hagan algo. A mí me duele el corazón, porque yo soy apasionada al que hago. Fue un trabajo muy grande. Es repetido y es repetido. Confiamos en ustedes. Diana, confío en ti, porque tú eres una persona que has estado viviendo con nosotros en los campos y sabes cómo jugamos en algo bien lastimoso. Gracias.
Joni Santana.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, members of the Callexico community. My name is Joni Santana. I'm representing All Valley Urgent Care. I am the Director of Human Resources, Legal, Compliance and Safety. I'm here to announce that we have been approved to open. So our clinic will be opening tentatively January twenty-seventh. We would love to invite you to a private tour if you're available any day next, this week. We are excited to have our clinic here and looking forward to serving the community of Callexico. We are also working with the Public Health Department and Emergency Services to be an alternate drop site for the community members versus having them transported to a hospital for those minor injuries that they need to be seen for. Thank you.
Okay, there's no more public comment.
First is for item number twelve A. Yolanda Cunningham.
Alguien olvidó sus clientes. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham y radico aquí en la ciudad de Callexico en el diecinueve cero uno Fillmore Avenue. Y buenas noches a cada uno de los miembros del Consilio y buenas noches a cada una de las personas aquí presentes. La razón por la que estoy aquí es porque es una oportunidad para hablar con todos ustedes juntos y decirles que tenemos la necesidad a los residentes de Victoria Bravo Robiles. Como ustedes ya saben la situación, me pidieron los residentes que viniera para que me dirigiera también a la comunidad, para que la comunidad también supiera la razón por la que nosotros estamos pidiendo lo que estamos pidiendo. Queremos aclararle... Queremos aclararles que los residentes de esa área, donde está el Parque Córdoba específicamente, nosotros queremos un parque que sea inclusivo para todos. Nosotros no estamos diciendo que no queremos ningún deporte, no estamos excluyendo a ningún deporte. Simple y sencillamente, queremos que existan diferentes actividades y también queremos aclarar que la razón por la que hemos estado peleando por muchísimos años, muchísimos años y parece ser que por fin se nos está escuchando, es referente a un impuesto específico que pagamos los residentes para ese parque y que algunas personas sí mencionan ese parque lo usa todo Callejo, todo, muchísimas mamás que conocemos que van a esa área porque se sienten más seguras por sus niños. Y lo único que estamos pidiendo nosotros es que se haga un parque inclusivo para todos, que existan diferentes actividades en que la gente pueda hacer deporte, caminar, se usa diario, señoras desde las 5 de la mañana caminando, no es justo que estén caminando en las banquetas. De veras estamos esperando que este Consilio haga lo que prometió, tome las decisiones honestas, correctas, las que son legales también, porque los residentes nos está costando y estamos pagando mucho dinero y tenemos muchos años pagando eso. Tenemos confianza y como dijo el padre, yo también estoy orando a Dios con todo mi corazón, de verdad les digo porque ha habido mucha frustración aquí, no solamente mía sino de otros papás, de ver cómo se han pasado los años y no nos han escuchado. Pero quiero pensar que ustedes van a hacer lo correcto y que van a hacer lo que realmente es bueno para toda la comunidad. Queremos ver niños ahí jugando, diferentes deportes, queremos ver mamás caminando, de todo Callejo, no importa porque no tenemos muchas oportunidades de ir a un parque que esté agradable. Ahorita está destrozado, me gustaría que la señora de Obras Públicas pues nos dijera por qué está el parque tan vandalizado. Yo sé que me va a callar y lo único que quiero pedirle señor Contreras, los topes urgentes, de verdad, ya el señor Legazpi los aprovo y botes de basura, por favor. Pagamos 18 mil dólares técnicamente al mes y no sé si sea suficiente para botes de basura.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham.
Gracias, muy amable.
City Managers Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I've mentioned earlier, I want to give my deepest condolences, I think those 26 families that lost a family member over the LA fires. I want to thank all the crews out there, not only fire, but it's a lot of people involved, law enforcement, Public Works, utilities. It's a large campaign type of fire, so it's not only just a fire, it's a fire department, right? But there's a lot of entities involved and I want to think all of them out. I want to, hopefully George Villanueva, the Callejo Fire Department engineer, is doing well. As mentioned earlier by Oscar Pesqueta, he was assigned to a very difficult task these past couple of days, so we will try to provide some stress debriefing when he comes back and if he needs it, reach out to PD and get him some services. With that being said, I want to thank the staff again for their hard work, that they're up here front and center and not only them, we were meeting with them every, kind of moving forward at the direction of, you know, we had some brainstormings with Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, to get these lines of communication going weekly and we started off our first department head meeting this Monday and it was pretty productive. It extended longer than we anticipated, but I think it was a good outcome. So I want to thank them and their staff for the continuous hard work. I want to thank the volunteer group for their continuous hard work and every one that's come to my office, Ms. Cunningham, and the meeting that we had the other day was extensive, but it was productive. I think we're moving in the right direction and again, like I mentioned, my door is open. I get resources from everyone and if there's something that I'm missing, that I can be helped on, I'm more than happy to move forward with that. So getting started, I want to congratulate Ms. Carla and Ms. Alvarado for getting all their minutes up to date and completed with the exception of tonight's meeting. Well, we'll now start backtracking and working on other meetings, but City Clerk has caught up with all her meetings, minutes. I'm not sure if you've taken a drive down Caesar Chavez. Monday morning, we talked about doing a round. I know Mr. Garcia does his Sunday evening drives throughout the community and shares a lot of unfortunate events, but we're working on it. So took a drive today and Tortas and Beer Building on Caesar Chavez is about 90% complete. I think the excavator was sitting on a piece of slab, concrete slab that needs to be removed, but that should be in the works to be done by Thursday. So finally, I know it would have been an eyesore for a long time, but I want to thank again Public Works for moving that forward and finally getting that area complete. I know there was a business out there even wanting to volunteer some grass and cedar or whatnot to make that a green area, so that's something we could look for in the future. So I had a meeting last week with ICTC. September 26, 2024, the city submitted a letter of intent for ICTC for 200,000, right? For the allocation of the REIT program. And this was at the direction of old prior administration, hey, we need to put, you know, a letter in so we can try to get some money for our housing element. Out of the 200,000 that we had submitted for, ICTC did award the city 115,000 that we can implement towards our housing element with the thanks of prior mayorship and council and moving forward. I know Mr. Coin will be happy with that. Had a meeting today with Civic Plus, I believe them, City Clerk and the live system of going towards a tablet and having all the minutes. Potentially we'll be going live or should be ready to go by the end of the month. We also did talk about updating the social media website. I know there was a discussion with Ms. Marcus to kind of revitalize the image of the city and make it more user-friendly. Planning, Mr. Coin gave me, he's been here six days and you bear with me, the list that he gave me that he's been able to go through in six days. So Code Enforcement approximately has 30 open cases opened in the month of December and up to January 13th. Fifty of those were notice of violations for issues of downtown, site audit, trash and recycling services, so they are out there. Mr. Garcia gave me not only a notice of violation, but citations as well to these businesses to be held accountable to clean up their area. The building issued 87 building permits from December till today. They're currently working on the website to include Code Enforcement, information on garage sales, temporary signs, vacant property registration, noise regulation and common code enforcement. Mr. Coin's team also have reached out as well, Mr. Oroscos. I know there was a homeless that was removed from rallies, so they reached out to the Imperial Valley and Continuum of Care, so now we have that process going where we're not just removing an unhoused individual, we're giving them an opportunity to go and seek services and resources, so that's a great thing. Code Enforcement Police Officers have provided assistance again with the homeless or updating the fencing exhibit that we hand out to property owners. Their team is also having discussion. We've had a discussion with a possible developer for a potential major annexation into the city for a large area of land west bound of Coal Road, Dogwood and Highway 98. Mr. Coin's team is also bringing an ADU ordinance to the city council that complies with state laws, which allows for up to two ADUs and one JDU in addition to the main property in the single-family home. They're working on the next steps of the housing element. He's also working on the Airport Land Use Commission, overrule process for projects deemed inconsistent with the airport land use capability. His team is also working on the telecommunication ordinance that we hope to have and take to the council by June. That's six days of work and I highly recommend if you haven't come to the planning department and visit him and what he's done to that office, wow. And it's very inviting, it's very business-friendly and he made it his own and that shows the type of person Mr. Coin is and his work ethic and how we want to proceed and move our city forward. I did attend the city library today, which had the library community connect program, which is a lot of agencies. There was karaoke going on at the time, so I didn't really chime in too much. I want to thank DISO that opened at the Cardenas Shopping Center. I know Madam Mayor, Ms. Legazpi was there, Mr. Calderón and as well as give a big kudos and hopefully they do well with the Jumping Bean Taco Shop on Highway 98.
Okay, now we're going to go to Councilmember comments. Mayor Pro Tem Legazpi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recently, Councilmember, Ms. Marcus and myself attended the art show that was being presented by here at the Cultural Arts Center, which was very, very nice, looking at a bunch of young artists showing their talent, which was awesome to see. Our future Picassos, there was a lot of beautiful paintings out there. Like the City Manager had mentioned, we, the councilmembers that he had said, attended the two openings. We had two openings. One was Dazio, which is a Japanese store. I think the representative of Dazio is here or not? No? Okay. Also, the second business grand opening that we had attended was Jumping Beans. Is that individual here? No? Okay. So it was packed. It was very, very packed. The food was great, music went from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. So that was very, very nice. Also, Councilmember Marcus and myself attended the SCAG. We had a SCAG meeting with the director and there was a lot of brainstorming going on that the director had informed us of what can be done for our downtown area. And I also had a tour of the Mexicali Police Department this morning. It was an eye-opener, so and they'll be coming down. I met the Chief of Police from Mexicali, he'll be coming down sometime next week or in two to meet with Chief Oroscos for some brainstorming ideas to connect with our police department at a different country either. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Talenda.
Lots of things going on since our last meeting. Many weeks have passed. I had the awesome opportunity to go see the Rodriguez Park getting worked on by all the volunteers. That was amazing to see Callejo open its doors to volunteers. It's very exciting and all the work that's happening is going to continue to happen. Lots of meetings with staff following up on cleanup, code enforcement, police questions for the department, the unhoused efforts. Also, we met with Caltrans, that was really exciting, and ICTC to talk about our traffic concerns and all the congestion in Callejo and what we can do and those meetings are actually continuing, so we'll get to meet with them again this week. But lots of stuff and I'll keep it short. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcus.
Well, it was a busy month. So I had the opportunity to go to the Callejo community and set our Christmas stands and that was very successful. Thank you to the Recreation Department for doing that for our community. I love to see how they congregate and get along and, you know, it's something very unique of our community and I want to continue fostering that and bringing these kinds of opportunities, not only for our senior citizens, but for our youth and for our families to participate in. We also had an opportunity to walk Nosotros Park and Rodriguez Park with the City Manager and Madam Mayor. And one of the things, as somebody else had mentioned today, the gates being left open and I think that we talked about that and we are working on a solution. We are very open and honest about the communications we're having with the community. We are listening to you, but we're also going, I was told by Mr. Solano, go and see the situation our parks are in, and we did. And so this is how we're learning of all these situations. I do ask for your grace because we're just coming in, but with your help, like I said from the very beginning, we're going to get this done. We are here to work. And also, thank you for inviting all of us to the Rodriguez Park where we got to meet all the volunteers that were helping out that day. I also was invited to the reorganization of Board of Supervisors for the Imperial County where we had two of the women who were selected, sworn in. And then I also had the opportunity with Mayor Pro Tem Legazpi to attend the SCAG and we did go over a lot of the projects that were designed for Callejo and we have some ideas, Mr. Coin, so bear with us. Also, we had the opportunity to go to the Callejo Art Council and it was honoring city, our city through murals. It was beautiful. If you guys have an opportunity, you need to go there. I really want to thank Mr. Jimmy Lurón and Eduardo Quintero for the efforts that they're putting with our youth and the lovely murals that are up there. And we did have an opportunity to go to the Jumping Bean Taqueria. The Castillo family was really grateful and insightful on the trials and also the wins that they had with this opening of this new venture and I wish them very well. The tacos were really good. And lastly, we also had a meeting with our members of Victoria Bravo yesterday. It was an extensive meeting, but like I said, we haven't opened our policy. We're here to listen to you and work with you to get these resolutions done. You placed your trust in us and I'm telling you, you picked the right people. We're going to make this happen, working together. Thank you.
Councilmember Calderón.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. As my colleagues informed you, we had two grand openings this week and hopefully we'll have more in the future. I wish them the best and hopefully tonight it was packed, at least Jumping Bean was packed, so hopefully we can bring more businesses to Callejo and get it going. Also, I'd like to congratulate and thank the volunteers tonight. It takes a lot of work to prepare, especially shop with the kids, it's a good gesture. And again, thank you for showing up and hopefully we can get things done. I'd like to, however, congratulate Mr. Contreras. A lot of these issues that were brought up tonight and the comments are being addressed, but it takes time. We've only been here a month and hopefully we can address them as soon as possible and get Callejo back on track. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Calderón.
Okay, we've been meeting, back-to-back meetings, so all of us have been doing a lot of work this past month. I just want to touch up, reinforce what Councilmember Talenda mentioned about our meeting with the ICTC and staff from the Department of Transportation and Caltrans and this meeting so that you know it's to address border traffic. So that was one of the priorities, I believe, of the entire council and we've been meeting to address that as soon as possible. We will be having a site visit and a walk-through this Friday from the Director of Caltrans, who will be coming down to assess the traffic situation and they're coming down Friday at traffic hour about 4:00 PM so that they can see what the city has to go through regarding our border traffic. So that is one of our priorities and we've been meeting and talking every week about it to get that moving forward. We also met with staff from the Ivy Economic Development Corporation and we're looking to find ways to drive development for our city. So that was a good meeting as well and they give us a lot of information and ideas on how we can bring more businesses to our city. Yesterday, I met with the Dean of San Diego State Imperial Valley Campus. Uh, yesterday I met with the Dean of San Diego State, uh, Imperial, uh, Valley Campus and that meeting was, uh, basically to restart our relationship and our collaboration with our academic community and our students, um, because that is one of the unique things that we have in Callexico, is that we have a, uh, a four-year university here and unfortunately we haven't been, um, you know, having a really good relationship with them and I don't know when that started happening, but we're definitely starting to bring that back. And, uh, that's it. So, we are now moving to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment? Okay. So then, um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Mayor Protem Legaspi and Councilmember Talenda, second. Can I get roll call?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Talenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
No.
Motion passes.
And I have a comment behind this, in this, on 12, correct?
No, we are on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Would you like to change your?
Yes, I'd like to retract my vote and yes, yes.
Okay. All right, now we are going to go to item number 12 that we moved in the beginning, which before it was item 16, now item number 12. It reads, uh, "Resolution Requesting a Formal Presentation from the Imperial Irrigation District Regarding Proposed Rate Increases to Power and Water Issues." We're gonna start with public comment. Madam Clerk?
David Saunders.
Good evening again. David Saunders, 121 East Port Street. I understand wanting to get this information, but last week, they had a meeting with the senior citizens, if I, if, if I'm not mistaken. And whether it's for senior citizens or not, that's still gonna be beneficial information. It's still useful. And in addition, there's gonna be another meeting tomorrow with the IID. Now, it may not be right here in Callexico, but, um, you don't always get what you want. Sometimes you have to deal, play the cards that you're dealt with. And, and in something like this, if the IID's coming out with this information, why would there be the need to ask for something special from it? If they're providing it, why would we need to ask for a special meeting just for Callexico? So, I don't really see the need for that if they're already being forthright and providing that. But, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Jesús Solano.
Jesús Solano, 426 Rosemont, Callexico. And I also have a question for the, uh, council. I was at that meeting last week and, uh, I didn't see anyone there except Mr. Calderon. And I spoke to the, uh, staff there and it's unbelievable, you know, that, uh, none of this council appeared except Mr. Calderon, okay? You guys should be ashamed of yourself, okay? And then to put this item in an, in an agenda demanding, okay? What's on the agenda? That's what they explained there. They had pamphlets, flyers, they brought 13 staff members. 13 staff members. And I asked them, "Has there been an open dialogue between you and the city council?" "No." "Why is it that we're starting to burn down bridges like the previous council? We need to use more diplomacy. We need to maintain a dialogue." Okay? Instead of, instead of burning down bridges, let's build bridges. Okay? Let's maintain that open dialogue. Because my question, what is, what is Callexico going to do? What is the staff here? What is the council going to do? If you guys don't agree, if we don't agree with the IID? Are we going to pick a fight with IID? A litigation? I believe not. We don't have enough funding to pick a fight. That's a start, okay? So, I'm upset, okay, for this item to appear. And I, I asked them, "Is there any problem with you guys, uh, meeting with the council or, or answering any questions?" "No." You know? So, next time, something like this occurs or you're planning on doing something like that? Maybe a phone call, an email or something like that?
Thank you. No more comments. Okay, so at this time, we'll bring it back to council. Mayor Protem Legaspi, do you have a comment?
No, I don't have a comment.
Okay. Councilmember Talenda? Would you like to say anything regarding this issue?
Um, so, this item, the way that I see it is to request, um, more attention to this city. Stakeholders can't drive all over if they don't have cars and the meeting that transpired last week, I had no knowledge of. I wasn't invited and for IID to say that they don't have communication with the city is accurate. I didn't know. I wasn't told, I wasn't invited, I didn't get anything. Um, so, for, for me, I, I think that this is a very important item and it does deserve a little bit more attention. The intention, attention, the intention, at least the way I see it, is not to burn bridges, um, it's actually just to ask for more information. Um, and I don't intend on picking a fight with IID. We don't, we don't have money for that. Um, if anything, this is to get the communication started. We're asking for them to give us more information, to maybe give us a workshop, not just for the senior community, but for everybody and to, um, notice that workshop that they're gonna have with adequate time. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Marcus?
I also want to know more information before, um, to be presented for our citizens. First and foremost, I am a citizen of Callexico and my position here is to fight for us. Um, yes, there was a meeting, but you know what? Not everybody is available at two. There's a lot of people who work at that time. And I believe it's the duty of the IID to come and present that information to all of our citizens, not just some. And that's why I am asking for more questions to be answered for all of us, so that we can all understand what's going on, not just a few, all. Thank you.
Councilmember Calderon?
The only comment I have is that tomorrow at 5:00 in El Centro, they will be having another workshop, if you didn't make it on last Thursday. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, the resolution, the intent of the resolution, um, by the city, uh, council of the city of Callexico to the IID. For those that, um, don't know what, what we're trying to do, is, um, we're requesting a formal presentation, um, from the IID for our citizens. We're not asking for the council members, obviously, we're gonna be present, but we're asking for our citizens and I'll tell you why. Because the Imperial Irrigation District is a publicly-owned utility and everybody that lives in this valley is owner of that district, which is why we vote for a representative. And our area, the city of Callexico, has a representative and that representative recently ran on more affordable rates. And, um, as soon as elections happened, uh, we are notified that the Imperial Irrigation District is planning on increasing our current power bill to about 23. something percent. Now, um, our representative was here, uh, was it December 18th or, or, I don't know if it was the meeting of December 18th? He was here and he, he came up with, with the newspaper and he just said, "I went to my first meeting, the IID is gonna increase the rate," and pretty much live with it. Well, that's not what a representative does, okay? The representative represents the people and because he is, it appears that he doesn't intend on representing the people, we are taking on this representation, which is why we are, um, we have this resolution before us. I don't know, and the reason why we want this presentation, because the majority of the people do not know that the IID recently received a grant for $319 million, okay? So, they received this amount and aside from that, they intend on increasing the public's bill approximately 25%. Now, what's a little bit, kinda, I mean, not disturbing, but I just don't quite understand that when the city of Callexico was looking at increasing the water bill a few months back, maybe five or six months ago, City Hall was full and, uh, it was full of people. And the same people now who are upset about this resolution to the IID, were here opposing the water bill. And that bill is a much smaller bill. It's much smaller than the electric bill and the, and the proposed rate increase was much smaller than the one for the IID. So, it is my belief that people are unaware of what is going on. People need to know what is going on because once this happens, we're done. The bill is up, you can't say anything anymore. So, I am requesting on behalf of the citizens of Callexico, that the Imperial Irrigation District, who is a publicly-owned utility, who has, who pays their general manager the amount that the United States President makes, um, come and give us an explanation and to make us understand why they need to increase our, uh, power bill after receiving such a large sum of money from, um, this grant. And also, if, uh, I would like them to explain to us what, what course or what they have done in-house to cut the cost of their operation because clearly, they have, they're paying pretty high salaries and, um, these are, you know, like I said, this is a publicly-owned utility and because it appears we're not gonna have any representation from our elected director, is why we are requesting for this resolution to be adopted. With that said, do I have a motion to approve?
I motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Talenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to item 12A. Sorry, let me put my glasses on. It says, "An Ordinance Amending Callexico Municipal Code Chapters 2.19, 2.27, 2.28, 2.31, and 2.56 Regarding General Commission Procedures, Community Services Commission, Planning Commission, and Community Police Advisory, Traffic and Code Enforcement Commission, and Adding a Community Facility, Facilities District Commission." Do we have any public comment?
Yes. Yolanda Cunningham?
Buenas noches de nuevo. Mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham. Estoy sumamente bueno, no nada más yo, los residentes de, de Victoria, del área de Victoria Bravo. Estamos sumamente interesados y estamos, eh, hacemos la petición formal ante usted, ante ustedes miembros del Consilio, que sí es muy importante que tengamos representantes de nuestros, de los pagos del CFT. Porque hemos pagado durante muchos años, alrededor de 20 años, y no se nos puede decir dónde está el dinero, en qué se ha aplicado. Que eso para nosotros pues es muy dudoso porque mucha gente muy molesta, entonces eso en otro punto pues se aclarará, pero tenemos que seguir adelante. Entonces, nosotros hacemos la petición, no sé cómo se maneje esto, pero hacemos la petición formal y les agradecemos que estén tomando en cuenta este punto y que, y que por primera vez estén, uh, haciendo algo tan importante para esa comunidad que por fin se nos está escuchando de nuevo, vuelvo a reiterarlo. Lo único que queremos ver es un parque para todos, un parque limpio, un parque, no queremos que esto se haga un conflicto entre la comunidad porque no debe de ser así. Pero también les voy a pedir a sí mismo que, por favor, estoy muy agradecida con, con muchas de las personas que están en las comisiones, pero a sí mismo también, de verdad les pido que, por favor, eh, analicen a las personas que van a poner en esas comisiones porque muchas de esas personas tienen sus propias agendas y sus intereses propios. Que cuando pongan personas que hay un balance en sus comisiones. Yo hablo respecto a las cuestiones del deporte, por ejemplo, deben de tener un balance de cada tipo de deporte, una representación, que no incline la balanza a una sola dirección. Y pues muchas gracias, estoy muy agradecida en nombre de los, de los, de la comunidad de esa área que, que realmente, este, es algo muy importante para nosotros y como les digo, en otro punto pues ya hablaremos de números, pero ahorita, por lo tanto, agradecerles y le pido a la comunidad que entiendan que esto no se trata de dividir. Yo muchas de estas caritas las veo en ese parque, la niña que estuvo aquí, eh, Laura veo con su papá casi muchos días ahí corriendo con sus hermanitas y me da mucho gusto y quiero, pues, veo muchas de las personas que caminamos allí, veo al señor Legaspi también, entonces eso es lo que queremos ver, un parque, un parque para todos. Gracias.
Thank you. I'm sorry, before we proceed with public comment, um, we did have a presentation, a small little, um, um, presentation because that item also talks about the, uh, Planning Commission, so we were gonna have the Planning Director talk a little bit about that. So, we're going to, um, move back, just have him do the presentation and then continue with public comment.
Good evening, honorable members of council. So, before you tonight with this item is also a request, basically... Is it, can you hear me now? Uh, so, as part of this item before you, um, we're requesting essentially that you assume the role of Planning Commission. Uh, this is just a change to Title II of the Municipal Code. Um, every jurisdiction state is required to have a planning agency. Um, sometimes the governing body takes on that role. In our case, and for the most part, and for all the cities that I canvassed through the Imperial Valley, all of them have planning commissions, so it is something unusual for a valley city. Um, I have had the privilege of working as a, as the principal planner for the city of Santee for the past 10 years, where, um, they did opt to have the governing body, being the city council, act as the planning commission and that has helped streamline processes and move forward a lot of legislative acts quickly through city, through the city. It removes, um, one layer, um, of the process, so, for example, with the planning commission, you, you agendize items, um, as well and you have to send out public hearing notices and 300-foot radius mailing notices and so, and usually it's only an advisory action that the planning commission takes, especially on, on larger legislative items like the housing element that will hopefully put before you soon and the ADU ordinance and the telecommunications ordinance that we're also gonna work on. And so, that helps streamline the process, uh, because, and then also, also we're limited, as you're very well aware, with our resources. I'm essentially the only planner presently, uh, for the city, um, and, um, having a planning commission necessitates additional staffing, overtime, as they need to prepare, as we need to prepare collectively, agendas, separate agendas, separate minutes, and separate public hearing notices. So, this really helps streamline processes. We have a lot of projects that are in the pipeline that will still need to go, uh, for a final ultimate decision by, by this body. And in terms of transparency, um, what's more transparent than this venue? And in terms of transparency, um, what's more transparent than this venue? Where you meet regularly and the, the meetings are predictable and broadcast on the world wide web. Whereas planning commission meetings have been irregular. Um, I, I assessed all the commission meetings from this, uh, past year and more than half of them were canceled. Um, some items were tabled because a commissioner, uh, didn't show up for a meeting and so there was a split vote and so that item had to be continued. And so situations like that have been prevalent and this would help remedy that and at least, uh, start, uh, expediting some of our projects, keep them moving forward in a timely manner. And then maybe once we're fully operational and we have the proper staffing levels, we could always opt to, um, reinstitute a planning commission as a separate body. It's not that there's no value to a planning commission, there's definitely value to have a citizen planners. Um, but for, in the current situation and with our current logistical situation, I would suggest that, uh, we get you as the body take on that role for the time being. Thank you.
And Mayor, if you'd, I'd like to highlight some other, um, proposed revisions to the ordinance just for, um, everybody's consideration. Um, we also, this is all commentary received from City Council, we also added an application interview process for, uh, appointees to these commissions, uh, remove the fifty-dollar currently, the fifty-dollar stipend that was currently provided for meetings attended. Um, uh, we also revised the ordinance to provide that meetings will now be monthly. Um, we also added a community facilities district, which was, which is what the woman, um, recently stood, just spoke on. Additionally, the current police advisory, it's being expanded and renamed as a police advisory, traffic, and code enforcement to be able to provide counsel and advice to the council on those items. Um, the staff report documents the specific changes and even the, the attached ordinance has redlined revisions specifically identifying the changes. But I highlighted the, the broader changes that are in the, um, for considerations from the council and obviously as a council item, um, if there are any thoughts, revisions, expansions, we, we could also entertain those as well.
Okay, thank you. So we resume with public comment?
Jesús Solano?
Jesús Solano, four twenty-six, Rosman, Callexico. And I'll start with the mission statement, just the first two lines, okay? Just right out there, yeah, we're not in compliance. So it means that all of a sudden, you know, this council with the planning director, okay, are specialists. He might be a planning director, he has experience, okay? But this council is a new slate. All of you started as a new slate. None of you are specialists and planning commission, okay? Now, we recently had a recall, and what was the purpose of a recall? Because we were getting sick and tired of persons sitting up here trying to function or act as dictators. So all of a sudden now you decide what's good and what's bad for Callexico. You're excluding the community. The, the reason was for transparency check and balance, to be involved, to participate. Okay, now all of a sudden we're trying to throw the planning commission under the bus? If there were people on that planning commission that not comply, well, part of it was the members that didn't comply with the meetings, but also the previous council management, you know, that did not remove those people from those councils, that was one. And then the city ordinance, eh, on the previous councils too, okay? On the, on the previous commissions, it was quarterly, then every two months, okay? You don't get things done, it's gotta be on a monthly basis. Now, even the senate, congress has their committees as advisory. So you might as well get rid of all the commissions, might as well get rid of the city manager. You wanna micromanage, go ahead and micromanage the whole city then. You don't need the manager, you don't need the commissions, you don't need input from the community. You wanna decide on your own what's best for Callexico and then a planning director? What happened to checking balance and transparency? We need to be involved, we need to be part of it. On the rest of the amendments, on the, uh, on the, uh, on the, for the commissions, I agree with that, I agree on that. If you don't comply with three meetings, you're out, okay? There's nothing wrong with it. On the stipend, I agree with that. If you wanna serve the community, serve the community. If you're gonna come in for fifty dollars or a hundred dollars, uh, per meeting, yeah? Get rid of that, there's no, nothing wrong with that. But excluding the community from participating just to fast-track some businesses and that include the community, I don't agree with that. And a lot of community members don't agree with that. What happened was the involvement for us being part of it, working together, coming to a conclusion. Like I said, you're a new slate, you're working good, okay? You've got community members that wanna participate, well, let's work together, let's work as a team. But like I say, you know, if you white guys wanna micromanage, get rid of the city manager, get rid of all the, uh, commissions, don't appoint commissions, it's useless.
Thank you.
Berta, Berta Carreño?
I'm asking her if she can give me a piece of paper so I can, I wanna talk about this subject.
Ana Serrano?
Oh, wait, so, so who, clerk, Madam Clerk? We have two, um, who was first?
Berta?
Oh, yeah, she called my name.
Buenas noches, miembros del concilio, buenas noches comunidad. Mi nombre es Berta Carreño, residente de la ciudad de Callexico, once forty-one, Second Street. La razón por la que, eh, me decidí a hablar el día de hoy es porque es en relación precisamente de las comisiones. Entiendo que hay esta reestructuración de las comisiones, lo cual me parece extraordinario, muy bien, un gran trabajo. Pero lo que me preocupa es la transparencia que hay en el proceso. Eh, entiendo que se han, eh, eh, puesto aplicaciones en el, en la página de la ciudad. Sin embargo, estas aplicaciones no están disponibles para cada quien. No toda la gente en la comunidad tiene acceso a la página de la ciudad. No toda la gente en la comunidad sabe de estas oportunidades para participar como miembros de la comisión. A mí me parece que es muy importante que toda la comunidad esté enterada de estas situaciones tan importantes porque un comisionado es el, es el enlace entre el gobierno y los ciudadanos. El comisionado lleva información, trae información. El comisionado es el que debe saber perfectamente cómo ayudar a la comunidad uniendo ambos, ambos, ah, puntas del, del, del gobierno. Por eso creo que es importante que esta información llegue a todos nosotros. Tengo, no sé, tal vez podemos traer varias ideas sobre cómo podemos lograr eso. Hay miles de canales que podemos utilizar para hacerlo, tanto en, ah, escrito, verbal, televisión, de boca en boca, como sea. Pero tenemos que hacer un esfuerzo para llegar a todos. Ah, una idea es posiblemente en la, en la, ah, en la factura que nos llega de la agua, incluir una página como una newsletter con información acerca de situaciones que están pasando en la ciudad. Esa información sí llega a todo mundo, no nada más lo que está en la página de la ciudad. La página de la ciudad es difícil de navegar también. Eso es algo que ustedes deben tomar en consideración, que el ciudadano común y corriente que no tiene mucha experiencia en internet o en navegar por páginas, eh, no, no tiene esa oportunidad. Ojalá que la puedan hacer más user-friendly, que la gente pueda utilizarla con más facilidad y que pueda llegar esa información a nosotros. Esa es mi, mi recomendación y es lo que me preocupa de este proceso. Quisiera que fuera un poco más transparente, muchísimas gracias por su atención.
Okay, thank you.
Ana Serrano?
Good evening, City Council, members of the Callexico community. My name is Ana Serrano and I live in the Hearthstone, um, neighborhood. Um, I echo Citizen Cunningham and I am one hundred percent in agreement with everything that you said. Um, it's been eighteen years that the residents of the Hearthstone community have been asking City Council after City Council after City Council to pay attention, to provide transparency, to work with our community, with our residents, with the fourteen-point-seven million dollar, uh, uh, what is it called? Bond, sorry. Um, and, and provide transparency and tell us when is it going to be, when the community is going to be finished, where the money has gone, et cetera, et cetera, and when the end of us paying that will be. There's no answers, there's no work being done, it's a complete standstill. I listened to what she said about the parks. I personally live that because I take my children to that community. I take my children to other parks as well. Uh, Carmen Estrada is also one of the people that I've been observing and, uh, working along with because I use the parks, et cetera, et cetera, with my children. So these commissions are extremely valuable to the City Council and to the citizens because the work will be done, the transparency will be there. The people that they pick, that they choose, that they interview and that they select for these commissions, they're gonna be on their heels. They're gonna be doing the work that the city councils in the past, not saying the present, have not done. So I am one thousand percent behind you guys picking and choosing these commissions to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricardo, Elupe Jiménez?
Good evening. Can you hear me? City Council members, my name is, um, Lupen Carlos Jiménez, from nine forty-seven Heber. Um, we are here to state our support for dissolving the planning commission. While we understand the sentiment behind the creation of the commission, we as developers believe that the hindrance it has on development is, is city far outweighs the benefits. The commission adds another layer of unnecessary bureaucratic threat tape to the already lengthy development process. Our housing development project has nearly, um, experienced two years' worth of delays to, due to the commission. We originally approved the commission, we were originally approved by the commission and asked to go back for still unknown reason. We have experienced council meetings due to lack of quorum, have had to show up to meetings only to have our item table due to lack of preparation from the committee and have had to, um, have committee members recuse themselves for personal conflicts of interest resulting in inability to take action. We are not, now in a hold until new committee members can be appointed. These inefficiencies have caused us and other developers in the region to question whether developing in Callexico is worth the trouble. Most, most importantly has delayed the construction of housing opportunities which the city desperately needs. Ultimately, the commission is only provides, only provides a recommendation, whereas the City Council has a final decision. We urge the City Council members to consider the dissolution of the planning commission to improve the ability to create development in the, in Callexico that serves the greater public good.
Thank you.
Victor Rocha?
Just wanted, Victor Rocha, Callexico resident, just wanted to add a little bit of two cents as always. I think, uh, the proposal by Mr. Michael Coin, it's, it's a perfect recommendation. It's been implemented, it's being done other way, other places, and it works. You still have to approve whatever planning commission recommends to you for approval. So eliminate the barriers, let's get things, we need business. We need money to come into the coffers. And the, the way you're gonna do it is, but, but let me warn you, your meetings are gonna be longer, way, way longer. Because you're taking on another layer that was kind of mitigated by your planning commission. If you're willing to take all that problems, because then you need to be up to speed in all the city laws and all of the requirements for CECL, for all those things that you're just starting off. You have someone with the expertise that can teach you. You have now two people that can put some sort of a training seminar for you guys to see what you're taking on before you take it on. So you can make an, an informed decision rather than just jumping into it. But my recommendation is try it, if it doesn't work, revert back to it. So you have that authority and you said, but you said with discretion where you involve the community. Because there's gonna be more public hearings after public hearings because that's what's required at the planning commission. And notifying those surrounding properties that are being affected and you guys are not doing it now. So I warn you, so if, if you're just gonna extend the meetings of the city council, maybe to two to three days. So that was my two cents, thank you.
Thank you. No more comment? Okay. So I'll bring this back to, um, council for comment? Oh, there.
I have two comments for the, uh, two different parts of this item.
Okay, so it, it's all one item, so you can make it in three minutes, it's all, it's all one vote.
You have five different commissions.
Right, but it's one item.
But, and it's five different decisions that need to be made.
Uh-huh, but it's one item, so. Well, how long are you asking for, five, for fifteen minutes?
Can you give me fifty minutes?
No.
Okay, so.
That's what I'm saying, cause you're saying five different items. I'm, I'm not either, I'm not either, so.
Jose Nojosa, ten fifty-six, F. Torres? First of all, um, I wanna say I was, I was in front, I've, I've been at the planning commission for almost four years and for the last two years I led the commission. If you have any questions now, council, my new council members, if you wanna ask them to me or directly about the, the commission, uh, you can do it this moment, if you have any questions. Regarding.
It's more for comment for us, it's not a dialogue, yeah.
Let's, let's open the dialogue, it's open.
No, it's not open to dialogue, I'm sorry, it's only open for public comment.
Well, it's for questions too, I can ask you questions and you may, may, may respond too. Okay, so I've known Mr. Coin for a long time, he's an excellent, excellent person and he's well more than qualified and I'm not against it. Um, I'm not for it, but I can say that he, he, he can do it. Like Mr. Rocha said, this is Callexico, this is not Santee, this is not Ramona, this is not, uh, Poway. This is a different culture, this is a different town. And like Mr. Rocha said, you're gonna take on minutes, hours, and days of the planning commission. So, um, that was my first part of the comment. And on, on the CFD, I would just like to thank, thank you Diana, thank you, uh, every, Mr. Legaspi, um, Ms. Thalenda, Mr. Calderón, Adriana Marquez, thank you for supporting this item. Um, we've been paying, uh, almost fifteen million dollars up to now and this is a never-ending bond. We're never, if, if we don't resolve this now, we're never gonna be, we're never gonna pay it and we're never gonna get our two entrances, we're never gonna get our, our family recreation center, we're never gonna get what I promised my daughter who's moving out to, um, college now. Uh, so thank you and hopefully we can move forward and, and resolve, resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for council comments, um, Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes, thank you. When we were elected by faith, a lot of you guys trusted us in the decisions that we're gonna make. There's been a lot of complaints, a lot of complaints of businesses not opening up because of a lack of quorum, people not showing up, and that's ridiculous. It took Jumping Beans Taqueria 15 months to open up. 15 months. That's ridiculous. Other businesses, six months because commissioners were not available. It wasn't happening. And Chick-fil-A, that's also, that's something that Mr. Coyne is going to bring in, and that was taken away, that was taken a while because of the lack of commission. Lots of complaints, the cancellations. I know that there is some possible, you know, non-transparency, and I, like Mr. Coyne says, if this doesn't work, give it a year. Give it, give it time. Have faith in us. Remember, the school impact fees is only good for one year. And but we're going to continue our dialoguing with our, with our Callexico Unified School District. We need to streamline businesses to come in. It's very important. Our town is dead. We need businesses. Have faith in us. You elected us. We have faith in our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talenda?
So in regards to the planning commission, from personal firsthand experience, the planning commission is the bare minimum, in my opinion, in terms of public outreach and transparency. The meetings are not live. They're recorded, and then the meetings, the minutes are typed up. If we would have had, there was one member in the public here who went to a lot of the meetings. He was a former council member, and he could attest, but he left. Maybe two, three, sometimes five, depending on what was going on, would show up to the meeting. We didn't have the turnout that a council meeting has. It's not live. It's not broadcasted. It's not recorded. And in terms of public outreach, which is such a hot topic regarding removing the planning commission and transparency, you can't get more transparent than coming before the council. And ultimately, depending on the type of process that's going on, if it's a conditional use permit variance, subdivision map, it comes, well, they go to different branches, but ultimately, they can end up at the City Council, whether it's appealed or not, and for processing. So with that said, I think that if you go and you look at all the meetings that have been canceled, and if you do PRAs on some requests from the planning commissioners who were formerly on there, you will question what transparency is on trying to stop projects, trying to impose hours of operation in certain areas, you know? And that's all in minutes. So this is not an attempt to circumvent the process or be untransparent. If that was the goal, it would have just popped up on a City Council agenda item. We wouldn't have talked about it before and expressed our thoughts. It would have just popped up like so many things in Callexico's past have popped up. And if it doesn't work and we don't, we don't see progress, it can always come back. And I really like the public comment about the time. I'm willing to spend more time here to try and expedite our projects so that our city can thrive than wait months and months and months to even see if Chick-fil-A will come after they waited six months to even be before the planning commission and get a seat, and then see if they'll get it. So with that said, I think that the idea that came from our new director is hopefully going to propel the change that we want to see in our community. And if it doesn't, then we go back to it. If it's too much, if we're not being transparent enough, if our community is coming out and letting us know like, hey, we don't like this, then it can always revert. But you can't get more transparent than having the planning commission, the council act as a planning commission. And the CFD commission, I'm very excited about it. I'm very excited about the Police Traffic and Code Enforcement Commission. I do want to add that I'd like to see a public outreach element incorporated into the traffic, Police Traffic and Code Enforcement Commission. So when they get requests for speed bumps or stop signs that people within that area are notified, so that they just don't come and they're like, oh, there's a stop sign here now. And I'd like to also request that on the CFD commission, there's some sort of presence of either the city attorney or have the consultant regularly attend those meetings because they're the ones who are the experts in the CFDs and also probably the finance director because they have to report on how the money has been spent historically. And those are elements that should be included into the ordinance outlined, like the staff that's going to staff them, correct? In there?
I don't think we need to have it in there. I think if we get direction, we can work on those in terms of the staffing. We can do that. We got clear direction as well as a notice.
Yeah, so I'd like there to be a public outreach element in that one, so along with the application process.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Marquez.
Well, I just kind of want to also say, you voted for us. You placed your trust in us when you voted for all of us here. So trust us. Don't compare us. We're our own. We promise change, and this is happening. Sometimes it's not going to be easy. Our ideas might not make sense, but then again, we have people like Mr. Coyne who's going to help us navigate through these murky waters. We want what's best for our city because it's also our city. This is where we live. We're not outsiders. And, you know, we want businesses to come over. We want new housing. We want to expand the city. We want it to thrive. We want it to be alive again. We promise change. This is the change. Trust us. We know it's going to be extra work, but that's why we signed up. We no les sacamos. We're here to work for you guys. Thank you.
Councilmember Calderon?
All right. As Ms. Marquez said, we promise change. But I'm going to tell you that every city in this valley has a planning commission. And if you go around this valley, there's growth, except in Callexico. So you tell me that a planning commission does not work. And I know Mr. Coyne brings a lot to the table, but he's new to Callexico, and so are we. And the reason I'm bringing this up, that as a board, I'm retiring, the other one is Mr. Legaspi. I don't have time to be meeting with investors. I don't have time to do everything that these commissions do because my time is valuable. But I did promise you that I would bring you change. I think that we have to concentrate on our unbalanced budget. We have multiple litigations. We have multiple workman's comp claims. We have lots of things to deal with. And I think by taking this on, it's just going to prolong things. And again, we said change, but at this point, I don't think we'd want to. I mean, we want the change, but it's not the time to change it. And what I'm getting, because we, this will probably lend some conflict of interest. It could become a conflict of interest. Like some of you said, it will lack transparency. But most important, it will take out our citizens, our citizens that are here every board meeting or council meeting, voicing their opinions and so forth, out of the loop on how Callexico will grow. So I am opposed of removing the planning commission. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Calderon. Okay, so I think that our fellow council members have really expressed, you know, in a good way what we want moving forward. All I can contribute to is that we did say we were going to change. This is the very first thing that we intend on changing. It's not about micromanaging. It's about making things better. It's about igniting development. We have a school district that wasn't, in the past, they had, we had these very high fees, right? And they were willing to come down for a year. And they said, we'll come down for a year. You keep saying it's our fault that we don't have development? Okay, we're coming down for a year. Now, let's see what you guys can do. And that's what it's all about. We want to take advantage that those fees are down. We have a year that they're down, that they're going to be down. We want to demonstrate to them that, look, you brought them down, you know, we also did something on our end to push for development, and that's how we start working together again, and that's how we make our city grow. Because yes, the rest of the Imperial Valley cities have a planning commission, and yes, it's working for them, but it's not working for us. And we are a very unique city. We are a border city. We are not the rest of our Valley cities. We're different. And just, and because we're different, we have to make different choices that will work for us. And like all of us, like the rest of the council members or the majority said, if it doesn't work, we can always bring it back. And like Planning Director said, you know, it's, it's the job of the planning commission currently is to review these projects that are coming before them and give a recommendation. And the City Council, they still come to the City Council. So for people that allege there's no transparency, hey, they're still coming to the City Council. Nothing changes in the end. So all they do is recommend, we're removing the middleman so that we don't have these commissions that don't meet in six months. And then imagine what happens, that they finally get a meeting, and then they reject it or they don't approve it. And now this, and now this developer is going to appeal it to us, and now we have to wait more time. It just doesn't make any sense. It's not making any sense. And I believe that this is the right thing that our city needs to do at this time. It's not written in stone. It could always come back. But those are the reasons that I have. And as far as having longer meetings, you know, we could arrange to maybe have them start earlier so that we don't have to leave at 3:00 in the morning, but when I ran, I ran for my community. I ran to do a community service. I'm actually here more now, you know, just learning how things are going and trying to make sure that things are getting done. And I do it for the love of my city, and if I have to be here another five hours to bring development in, then like Councilmember Marquez said, what did you say?
No les saco.
No les saco. So with that said, motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I have one more comment that I forgot to mention. And regardless what happens today, we're still going to have commissions. And what I want to say is that it starts here because we are going to appoint the commissioners, and we're going to make sure, I hope, that we make them responsible and allow them to do their job. Because in the past, a lot of meetings were postponed and so forth, but it lied here. It starts here with the council here. So whatever this, wherever it goes, I hope that you keep in touch with your commissioners and keep informed of what's going on. And that's all I have to say.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve? Item number 12A.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second? Second? Okay, motion to approve by Mayor Protem Legaspi and second by Councilmember Talenda. Roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Talenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Si.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Now moving on to item number 15. Appointment by Mayor Noricumbo of an administrative hearing officer pursuant to Municipal Code Section 1.27.090, hearing officer. And I'm just going to give a little background on that. I mean, not much other than, I guess I have to appoint someone. We haven't had a hearing officer in years. And what this, what this does is that every time there's a citation and somebody wants to appeal that citation, they have the right to go before a hearing officer. And since we haven't had one, well, we have all these citations pending that we can't close out. So at this time, I would like to appoint Carla Flores from the city of Callexico as the new hearing officer. And I would like to ask her, before she leaves, because she's here, please stand up. And before you leave at some point, get in contact with the city clerk so that she, we can set up a swearing in for you. Okay, moving on to item number, well, you know what? It was, I said 15, but we had moved, right? So item, old number 17, what is it now? We're going to keep it 17? Okay. So we have the approval of a resolution of the City Council of the city of Callexico approving the memorandum of understanding between the Callexico Police Department and the Whole Person Care Clinic. So bring center. Chief Orozco, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I bring before you a staff report of MOU to be approved between the Callexico Police Department and the sobering center. A little bit of background, I think they have a rep here, Mr. Zambrano. So if you want to step up, I'll give you the intro. So basically, the center is a new program. Typically, when the police department encounters a person that's intoxicated, generally, it's a medical need. They're not usually charged with a crime unless they commit a secondary crime. So what we do is we become a caretaker. We take them into our jail cells, and we watch them. We check them every 30 minutes until we either find someone to take responsibility of them or they're sober enough to be able to be dropped off at home, or we take them to the county jail where they'll take over the responsibilities of watching them. At some extreme cases, they get taken to the hospital. So this new program that's been set up, it's over there by Heber and 111. It's a new program that's opened up that's going to give us another avenue. Plus, it's going to open up a new resource for these people that are struggling with addiction, and they'll be able to find another outlet so that way they're not repeat offenders. So I'm going to bring up Mr. Zambrano from the sobering center, and he'll give you a real quick brief of what that center actually entails.
Good evening, Council. Buenas noches. Yeah, so basically, the memorandum here is to, you know, collaborate with the Callexico Police Department and Whole Person Care Clinic. Yeah, my name is Joaquín Zambrano. I am the site manager for, you know, this newly service that we have erected here in Heber, California. And so, you know, like it was explained, we are trying to prevent, you know, ERs or even, you know, law enforcement or safety patrols getting tied up too much with maybe dealing with somebody under the influence, whether it's alcohol or any illicit substance. And what our facility is going to want to do is provide a safe environment for them to, you know, first of all, sober up. And, but not only that, give them the opportunity to, once, of course, they're sober, to be routed to any potential social service or even guidance from our own personnel and team. You know, with, of course, the participation with Callexico PD and all law enforcements around our county, you know, we just want to, you know, prevent that recidivism of individuals,
Yeah, so basically, the memorandum here is to, you know, collaborate with the Callexico Police Department and Whole Person Care Clinic. Again, my name is Joaquin Zambrano. I am the site manager for, you know, this newly service that we have erected here in Heber, California. And so, you know, like it was explained, we are trying to prevent, you know, ERs or even, you know, law enforcement or safety patrols getting tied up too much with maybe dealing with somebody under the influence, whether it's alcohol or any illicit substance. And what our facility's gonna wanna do is provide a safe environment for them to, you know, first of all, sober up. And, but not only that, give them the opportunity to, once of course, they're sober, to be routed to any potential social service or even guidance from our own personnel and team. You know, with, of course, the participation with Callexico PD and all law enforcements around our county. You know, we just want to, you know, prevent that recidivism of individuals, of course, and also guide them to the much-needed services they might need, whether it's mental health, substance use disorders, or even things pertaining to their physical health. We have a great team. They're well-staffed, medical assistance, stabilization and security individuals there, including nursing. The site is a 24-hour site. We haven't closed. We started accepting, of course, individuals about two weeks ago. And, you know, it's just a stepping stone, this sobering center, to something that we're trying to do bigger here with this nonprofit organization. It is a community care campus that's funded by national healthcare and, I'm sorry, housing advisors. And we want to create more of a, I guess, a holistic approach on providing more services to our residents in the community, not just the sobering center. We also have recuperative center and services there that we are offering to the community. And, you know, but the plans are to just continue growing, you know, offering pharmacy on site, more counseling, more beds, more of these types of services for not only, of course, Callexico, Heber and beyond. So of course, with, you know, your guys' participation and guidance and assistance, we really do, you know, we look forward to working together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you finished? Okay, so do we have any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Mayor Protem Legaspi, do you have any comment?
Yes, where were you three years ago? I'm just kidding. Retired, intern police chief, that's why.
Yes, yes.
I think it's an excellent idea, just the assistance and officers not going to the hospital and staying there for six hours with an intoxicated individual.
Yeah, absolutely. Three years ago, I was with Imperial County Behavioral Health, so.
That's another issue.
I know, I know. But yeah, I completely understand where you're coming from. And, you know, yeah, three years ago, I would've enjoyed, you know, having this type of service here as well for the community beyond, so. Thank you.
Can I motion to approve?
Do you have any other comments? No, from councilmembers? No? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve by?
I'll motion.
Oh, okay. Second?
I second.
I'll second.
Okay, everybody mentions, everybody second. No, motion to approve was Councilmember Thailanda, second, Councilmember Calderon. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dayana Norikumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Of course.
Councilmember Lisa Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have future agenda items. So Mayor Protem Legaspi.
I was ready to leave, just kidding. Yes, first of all, Juan, city manager, doing an outstanding job. Continue your work. You're that one-man team without an assistant city manager. You're doing great, so continue on. The pillars for Axess and Nosotros Park. Let's have those removed temporarily during the baseball field, baseball league time. Also, Chief, I know that we were talking about the tagging issues and you were thinking of putting cameras up there. Okay, let's have that done. Heber Park, the eight-point-whatever-million dollars, can we have a report on that on our next meeting? And I believe after that, we need a town hall meeting because we need it. And speed bumps, any, I know we had a, we did a $14,000 study. Just give us an answer where we're at on our next meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes, so I'd like to bring back that item that was seconded quite a few months ago. I believe it was Councilmember Legaspi during the summer for the forensic audit. It was first and a second. Now that we have a finance director, if you guys can work on the RFP and then bring us the RFP so we can see what it encompasses because it's not, it wasn't intended to be a citywide audit. It was intended for the finance department, the public works department. And I believe that was just those two starting. And so we wanted to see the RFP proposal before it gets sent out for circulation to see if it encompasses all the details that we wanted within the forensic audit for the RFP. So if you could get that brought to us, the draft, before it circulated for the next meeting, please. And then an update on the Caesar Chavez property? Report on what the status is? And like, once it's knocked down, just to let us know? Okay. Can I be there?
I went by today and it was, I think the only foundation was the only piece and they were gonna break it.
All right, all right. Yeah, just an update on that because that, for me, is very exciting. Been there forever. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez.
I know that we had previously spoken about having somebody watching parks after dark, making sure that we're locking up gates when the facilities are no longer in use, having an individual maybe turning on and off the lighting in the facilities, and making sure that we're also in charge of irrigation with that individual only having access to that. We spoke when we walked the park, so I just wanted to kinda go back and see if we can have an update on that. Also, the water pump at Rodriguez is not working. So I don't, the water pump at Rodriguez Park is not working. So I don't know if, what the timeframe would be on working on that. Only because, like, I don't know if it's one of the parks that's used for Little Leagues or could be since it's one of the ones that's getting revamped. Also, would like to schedule a meeting with Parks and Recs because I do wanna be involved in bringing back the, I guess, farmer's market, making sure that we're also, like we have talked before, the arts, including.
So don't leave Norma.
Yeah, we need to, we're gonna have power. And then we're also talking with Chief Orozco in regards to another venture that we wanna talk about, maybe.
Volunteer on patrol?
For our downtown area. And it's mainly just to deter any, you know, people just hanging out up to no good. And I just wanna say, thank you, Mr. Contreras, for all the hard work you do. Sometimes you might feel that it goes unnoticed, but we are noticing and we're very appreciative of everything you do. Our fire department, I wanna make sure that we're, you know, supporting them, especially now that we have the fire, firemen out helping with the alley fires. And the department head, thank you guys so much for being here and for helping us in putting up with our crazy ideas sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. Councilmember Calderon?
Yes, I mentioned it last meeting, and I think Mr. Contreras was on it, that we have a lot of dead trees throughout the city of Callexico, in our property of Callexico. So what I'd like to see is to cut them down. They're a fire hazard. I mean, they fall, if you fall on someone, it's a liability, so. And we're talking big trees that are dried up that need to be taken down. Also, I know that we had issues with the Little League. The season's about to start. Can someone tell me the status of where we at with the plumbing and so forth with the restrooms?
For Alex Rodriguez, Alex Rivera, public workers working on getting a couple quotes from plumbers to go and assess the restrooms, depending on how long this work might take. The Little League, I think, was advised of the possibility of having them have potter potties during the season, so while the work is getting done for the restrooms. But there was a folks didn't come out this week, I believe, for the restroom there at the Rivera Park.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
One more thing. And thank you for the burgers or tortas and beer? That was nice. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to see, I know we had talked a little bit about the public green areas, but I would really like to see the watering of the green, public green areas. I know there's some areas that belong to Caltrans, but let's identify those that belong to the city. And if we could start getting them seeded and watered and making our city look green and beautiful, I would really appreciate that. I would also like to request that we continue. I mean, I know we, I think we're already doing it just recently, but maintain a proactive approach to the houseless situation. And so we don't have to keep calling you and asking you and maybe have, you know, the assistance of the PD as they're driving around to not have to call and ask, hey, what do we do? They should already know what needs to be done as well as with code enforcement and the cleanliness. We do know that, some people already know that there's no code enforcement officers on the weekend, so that's when they do, you know, the stuff with the trash and every other thing. So if we can figure out a way to where we do have code enforcement on the weekend. Also, one of the members of the public did ask about the $500,000 that was allocated to Nosotros Park. And I know, I think we had agreed to move some part to Rodriguez Park to finish it off. But I don't know if there's anything that prevents us from working in conjunction, you know, and starting to do the repairs that need to be done on Nosotros Park as we continue with Rodriguez. So I mean, I understand, you know, but I don't see why we can't be doing both, especially if one is being done a lot by volunteers and then the other one, you know. So we can do that. The tagging issue, we need to maybe sit down